Good afternoon and welcome to the October 20th, 2020 Lone Tree City Council Study Session. In support of social distancing requirements and based on space limitations of our building, the city is limiting physical attendance at our public meetings to only essential staff, applicants, and elected officials, and will continue to provide access to the public via electronic participation. All attendees are required to wear face coverings when entering and exiting the building and when we are within six feet of one another. The city will also implement symptom monitoring measures for attendees such as temperature checks and completion of the city's facilities health screening survey before entering the building. The city council does not vote during our study sessions since the presentations are for information only. Therefore, there is no public comment during our study sessions. We are going to start off our agenda this afternoon with introduction of new staff member and our finance director, Willie Neerling, is going to be coming in to introduce us to our new budget and revenue analyst and Joey Conrad. So nice to see them walking in right now, six feet apart, following all the rules. We love it. Well, you guys can do the math, right?
We can.
Yeah. Good afternoon, Willie. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Today, I have the pleasure to introduce to you Joey Conrad, our new budget and revenue analyst. I'm so, so, so excited to introduce him today. He has hit the ground running. He started on September 14th and has already started catching us up on delinquent business accounts. He's been cross-training with our revenue and licensing clerk to business continuity planning and integrated so well into our team. This is the first time since I started that we have a fully staffed finance team. I'm super excited about that, if you can tell. And with that, I will let Joey introduce himself, his background, his experience, and talk a little bit about that.
So I'm out of breath from running over here. Well, we made you rush right in here. And Joey, while you're approaching, I would just say you snuck in right under the wire. I think we are all know that we have a hiring freeze on, but the finance department unfortunately has been one of the busiest of any of the city's departments, and we knew how important this position was to really keep the city optimally running and efficiently. So we're excited to have you. I don't know if we're as excited as the finance director is, but we might just be. So with that, please come in and you can take your mask off so we can get, see what you look like and say hello. And why don't you just share a little bit about yourself and your background?
Well, thank you all for letting me be here today to talk about myself a little bit. Thanks, Willie, for the introduction. First and foremost, I would like to say that I'm excited to be here, excited for this position, excited to bring my expertise into this role. So with that, I'm from Parker, Colorado originally, so just down the street. So this community is basically home for me. I grew up here. I'm glad I can make an impact being a public servant here. And then, so I went to Colorado State for my undergrad in political science and history where I got some expertise in local government. I was an intern with Colorado State Legislature with Representative John Wilson, James Wilson. And then I worked with Thurmer County for a little bit doing emergency management. And then I went to the University of Kansas for my master's in public administration. Seth knows about that very well. Even though he's a chief stand, we'll cut him a break a little bit. And then I, while out there getting my masters, I worked for the city of Topeka, Kansas in the finance and budget office, doing various projects with the budget documents and forecasting and bringing those different documents together. And the budget book was mainly my role there. And then my second year of my masters, I got a new position with the city of Mission Hills, Kansas as a management analyst. And there I did a bunch of different projects doing storm drainage analysis, budget, I created a budget and brief for them. So that's my, kind of my budget experience and where I come from and what I'm doing with my previous background. And on a personal level, I love to be outdoors, hiking, anything sports, go Broncos, avalanches. And yeah, that's about me. So if you all have any questions.
Does Seth know you're aiming for his job? With that background, that breadth of experience, no, I actually, I think that's tremendous. I think that's wonderful value to add to the city of Lone Tree to have that broad background with, with local government and state government. And I love a CSU ramp as the mother of one. So I don't think we have any questions other than to say welcome. And I'll just, you know, because during COVID, harder times, normally you would be seeing us a little bit more. So I do want to give the council members an opportunity to just say a quick hello. And we'll just start with council member Carpenter.
Great. Joey, welcome aboard. Sounds like you have a really diverse and extensive experience. So one question too, so I know Willie mentioned that you were guaranteed to raise our revenue 25% if you want to interview. So we look forward to working with you on the revenue side of the books. So great. Welcome aboard.
And council member Shaw.
And welcome to you also. I'm, I'm just delighted that another Kansas.
Good Lord, enough from you.
Because gosh, what would we do without the, but really welcome and we're very fortunate to have you. I love the background that you've shared with us and glad you could come back home to the Parker vicinity.
Mayor Pro Ten Brunick.
I'll just add my welcome to you as well, and you're joining a great team. So I'm really excited to have you and I hope you'll really benefit from, there's some great people to learn from around you as well. So welcome to the team.
Thank you.
And council member Anderson.
Welcome, Joey. We're glad to have you onboard. Also appreciate your commitment to public service in terms of your schooling and your work career so far. The budget is one of the most important things we work on all year long, and we make better decisions if you bring us better data.
Thank you.
We need you to do a good job.
That's why I'm here.
All right. Well, and thanks for being here tonight, and we look forward to the days where you'll be seeing our faces around the office. So we're hoping that's going to happen in 2021. So, all right, thanks for being here, Joey. Take care.
You too.
Okay, next on our agenda is an update on the Ruder Hess Authority. And we actually have got Austin is going to be introduced, Austin Good from the city staff is going to be introducing this topic. And then we're going to bring in Ron Redd, district manager for Parker Water and Sanitation District. So with that, I will turn it over virtually to Austin.
Hey, thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'll keep this really brief because Ron's the one you really want to hear from, but just, the city is a part of the Ruder Hess Recreation Authority. Ruder Hess is the large reservoir that is just southeast of town, and it's really a great asset for the city, not just in, you know, providing water security for the region's future, but also in developing it as a recreational asset. And so Ron, who's the district manager for Parker Water and Sanitation District, who knew when he signed up for that job that he'd also be signing up to run a recreation authority? He's going to be giving you a little bit of an update about the development of the recreational assets happening around there for our residents and folks in the community to enjoy. So Ron, come up to the podium and really excited to have you.
So Austin, while he is walking up on behalf of council, let me just say, just cheers to you and thanks for the great job you have been doing, not just with this, but with South Suburban in general and as we look to the future of recreation in the city of Lone Tree, you've done tremendous work on that. And with that, he is here. Ron, so welcome and thanks for being here and let us know what's happening at Ruder Hess.
I certainly will. Thanks for the invite. I never get over here, so it's kind of nice.
Hey, spend some money on your way while you're at.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, that's never a problem.
Make a trip to Target on your way out.
My new favorite restaurant, Carbonzo's.
Oh, yeah.
So I get the first slide. I want to just point out something on here. This is a view from one of the decks that has been constructed and it's kind of fun because when we built this, I said, you know, I hate the fact that all decks have that railing about the height of my eyeballs when you sit in a chair, right? So I asked him to figure out a way to do an infinity deck and it's wonderful. It's absolutely wonderful. But what's really cool about the center of the picture, you can see a clump of scrub oak in the far distance. Just above that, you see a line. That's one of the trails that's heading off. It's about almost two miles to its destination that's being built. I just want to point that out. It's, it shows that trail. Unfortunately, with the dry weather, the reservoir is down 18 feet from two years ago. So it's doing its job. Unfortunately, we keep using it and so we need some more water. So next slide, please. So this is the agenda I came up with. This is your meeting. You guys can ask me anything you want. Feel free to interrupt and ask questions. I've been given, Austin told me 15 minutes and I get cut off at the knees. So I'll talk fast, but if you're talking, we can go longer. So I thought I'd talk a little bit about the 2021 budget priorities for the Recreation Authority. Give you guys an update on the 2020 events in a COVID year. We have construction going out there, update on that. There's a lot of fishermen out there we are finding. They're wondering when they can get out there, so I thought I'd do a survey on that. And then, of course, any questions that come up, but feel free again to interrupt and ask any questions. So let's, let's move on. So budget priorities, there are two things that the board is focusing on. First and foremost, they want to get this thing open like a normal reservoir to the public, and so they're looking at how to do that. The biggest hurdle for that is, of course, the operation and maintenance side, the staffing, mainly of how you do that. And so building things is easy. You can get money for that. One-time Costco built something. A funding staff is a lot more difficult. So the board is, is, is looking to take, how can we use the money that they built up to do some type of an opening? And when I say staffing, it's, you know, people at the gates, it's rangers, it's the taking care of the trails and the garbage, that type of thing, and admin. Currently, Parker Water is providing that service for the authority, but you know, we learned a long time ago, we're good at water and wastewater, and people like Rob Han are good at parks. We need to really turn that over to the people that are good. So we're trying to figure that out, and I think they have some really, really good ideas. We actually meet, I believe, in a week from Friday to see how to address that. And I would say most likely, this is a guess on my part, but I would say in 2021, you'll probably see more of a soft opening, maybe three days a week, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday for the summer between the two major holidays. But that's something they think they can achieve. So that's number one priority, how to open it to the public. At the same time, they want to continue to build facilities, and I'll give you an update of what happened this year. But we continue to build things because when we do open, you want to have something for people to do. And so I was going to just point out a couple of things. When I say build facilities, we need some shoreline amenities like a dock or two to help people with their paddle boards and that type of thing. Restrooms would probably be good to have out there. It's a drinking water reservoir, so we, Parker Water supports that. Parking lots, we think we might need a larger parking lot, especially over by the incline area. But also, we're pricing a trail, an additional trail. We've done, we'll have almost four miles down here in the next couple of weeks, and we have a three and a half mile trail that we're getting a price from our contractor on to see if that's something the board's interested in. And if you don't mind, we practiced the little outline. It is, it starts from the incline and it goes along Hess Road and under, the county has that bridge right there. And then it does a larger loop. You can see the dotted line at the green lights following. It's, it's not 100% that we were out walking. It's changed a little bit, but it is awesome. It is, I hope we build it because I like to run and a five, a three and a half mile run and that is beautiful. While we're out there, I don't know, we came across by 40, 50 head of elk out there and a bunch of coyotes. So it's just going to be very beautiful. So we're going to get a price on that, so potentially that might be in the 2021 budget as well, but we'll see how much money we have. Okay, any questions on that before I move on?
So just so I'm clear, right now, there are no trails that are open to the public. They're constructing, you're constructing the trails this year. Are there, so there is no public access as of today unless you're having an event or have a weekend where you're doing the paddle boards or things like that, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
The trails on the water side are, it's, there's a two and a half or 1.8 mile out and 1.8 back. That's not quite done, but that's not accessible by the public. And then there's a trail that takes you from a parking lot near Hess all the way back to the, where the paddle boarding happens. And I believe that's, I believe it's about 0.7 miles if I remember right. So, but on the dry side, on the other side of the dam, the incline, and there's an incline with the trail and then the trail that connects to Cherry Creek Trail, that's almost done. That will be available to the public within the next month.
Oh, great. And even before the soft opening of 2021. Thanks.
Because there's no gates or anything. People will just be able to access and go out there.
Well, I bet people are accessing it anyway. I don't know.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of mountain bikers that are attempting the construction site over the weekend, so. Okay. Okay, so I think we had a good, good year, actually. In 2020, we were restricted by COVID on how many people could be out there. For an example, we used to do paddle days, 100, 120 people out there, we were restricted to 50, and we sold out every day that they had it. Avid for Adventure is this great kids camp and they're, they're great to work with, and they take their kids out there and teach them how to kayak and paddleboard and life lesson type things. And then COS is a private company that rents paddleboards and kayaks. And if you don't have your own, you can rent them from them and do it. So in, in the five months we were open, you know, almost 2,600 people visit a Ruder Hess, which is incredible to me considering it's not open to the public. So they've been doing a good job on that. Yes, sir.
Ron, are, is the public able to bring their own paddle boards or do you have to have a certified one? I guess I know there are the issues that Cherry Creek Reservoir had around that.
So that's why we, we created this paddle days. So what it is, is it, it's an event. Again, it's not open to the public. And on paddle days, you sign up through the webpages. Again, we only allow 50 this year per session, but you could show up at, I think at 7:30 and paddleboard till noon. That would kill me, but there are people that actually could paddleboard for four hours. You can bring your own paddleboard for that, but we had rangers inspecting for zebra mussels. It's really quick on a paddleboard and it's part of the cost that I believe is $15 a board to go in there for four hours. And so the inspection became part of that. And so yes, you can use it, but that, that was created for people with their own paddleboards.
Great, thanks.
Okay, next slide. All right, so this is the incline of just, this was taken about a week ago, and it shows you somewhat the look and the view of it. This is probably halfway up. And so again, this will be finished in the next, by mid-November, they're predicting. It's different than most, it's a different experience. And, and I say that because if you compare this incline to Castle Rock, you think, huh, it doesn't seem like much. So Castle Rock, you have the parking lot and then an incline. And I had to write it down because there's no way I do numbers well in front of a crowd. I know I'm an engineer, but it's just not my DNA to remember these things. So Castle Rock, it's 200 steps and you climb 178 feet. It's pretty steep and it's, it's pretty good workout. And then they have a trail that comes down. The Ruder Hess incline, if you just look at the incline, it's 114 steps and 140 feet, so it's smaller. But it's a different experience because to get to the incline, you have to walk four tenths of a mile to get there. And so when you look at the whole experience, it's 132 steps because we have some interim steps to help people up over a hill, and it's 232 feet in height. So if, I always tell people, if you're, if you're the type that tries to get that parking place right in front of your gym, you probably won't like this incline as much, if you don't mind walking across the parking lot. So it's a different experience. It's a beautiful trail to the incline, and once you're up on top, you, you see the entire Front Range, Denver, you know, all the way to Long's Peak. It's a beautiful view provided the air quality is good. And then we have a trail down. That whole loop is one mile. And again, that'll be open to the public probably mid-November. We were not going to do a grand opening in the middle of winter. We're going to wait till the spring and then coordinate. The county has their trail that connects Roxborough to Cherry Creek, and we are connected. We have a trail that connects to them, and we thought that'd be nice to have one event. And then in the back of my head, and we'll let the county pay for everything. And so we'll, we'll do that event with them. But we've talked to your board members and they're going to talk to all your public relations folks, and there may be some small events you all might want to come out. The elected officials might want to come out and see it when it's all done. But the grand thing will happen in probably early spring. Hopefully, we're done with the COVID thing by then, so. We also, as I mentioned, have trails, almost four miles. Again, a little over a mile and 1.7 miles on the dry side, which would be open to the access, and a little over two miles on the inside. Once, once we get the, open to the public, they'll have access to it. But until then, it's more event-driven. So Castle Rock a lot of times has a trails day. Anyone can sign up from, from any city, and I think that'll be a great event as well. So next slide shows the facilities that are being built. So you seen the one infinity deck? We have a couple shade structures. This is the largest one. It's the same view as that first deck. And these things are amazingly huge. I didn't realize how big they were on paper. They never looked that big. But when we took, I think it was, they owned a newspaper, one of the newspapers out of Castle Pines, their first thought was, oh, I would get married here. And so it's, it's, it's that kind of a setting. It's a beautiful setting, a lot of room for people to get together for parties or just be, be there. So, you know, I could see more of these popping up over time around there. We have this large one. We have two smaller ones closer to the waters when people do their paddle days, then they can come in, sit in the shade, eat, and still have a view of the lake. So, so that's, that's happening. And again, hopefully this will be done mid-November. So this, this slide was done like three days ago. Most likely, this will be done the 7th of November. We'll see. There's always a bunch of those items. So any questions on that?
It's exciting though, very exciting.
Next one, please. All right, fishing. So, so we do a fish survey out there twice a year. We have been stocking this reservoir since the beginning, but we've been putting game fish in since the authority came about. So it's been about five years. And we put in bass and, and I'm a trout fisherman, so there's no other fish other than trout. But walleye bass, perch, bluegill. In addition to, we put fish in there for water quality purpose. We, we have things in there that eat algae and they've gotten huge over the years. They're like these pre-storyed fish that swim out there, and, and they're doing well. We got our really first good fishing report. They were out there, they shot them and they count them. And after two years, they found the perch. They've been hiding really well. So they're doing, they're doing really well. They've, they've hauled in some pretty good sized walleye. I heard a two pounder came in, and so that's great news. We asked, can we open it up to fishing in 2021? They said probably not. They feel that we could do an event or two. There's always fundraisers we get asked about, so we think there might be some type of fishing event that will happen next year. And again, when we do events, other people pay for the rangers and the security and the gates and stuff like that. Potentially 2022 is when it'll be able to sustain fishing. So that's, it's getting here, but people are impatient, but it just takes a while to build that population up.
So I do have a question about the fishing event. So I bet there will be a lot of demand for that. So how are you going to select who gets the privilege of having the event? Are you going to prioritize local nonprofits in Douglas County or?
It's a, it's a great question. I don't know if I have the answer. Typically, what we do is people submit proposals. Like we'll say, ah, we want to do a fishing event, and then we'll, we'll solicit proposals and just pick one that best fits the authority. But there are, like the, the police officers have an event every year, so I'm sure they would look at nonprofits as well.
I would just humbly suggest that if there is a way to prioritize our nonprofits in Douglas County, I think there is a lot of need in Douglas County. And, and so as you think about those decisions, and maybe you do establish some criteria because I think it's going to be hard to choose. And I can think of a couple I'd love to steer your way, so.
Okay. No, it'd be great. I know when I talk to the, the board, which is made up of your rec managers from around here, one of the hardest thing is like 5Ks. I mean, they could do a 5K twice a weekend for us, and they have to prioritize through that. So we really lean on their experience on how to do this.
Yeah, and I see someone over there, so that's my two cents on that, sir. If we could, we prioritize the Douglas County nonprofits, at least at the beginning, to kind of introduce it to the people who have been paying for it.
And you're well represented, by the way.
Yeah, I know. We're very fortunate. We feel very fortunate.
It's, it's really nice. So a lot of people say, why isn't the water district in it? And it's like, you know what, we have, we have, three of the board members have won national awards in the rec world, you know, between Parker, Castle Rock, and Douglas County. And so it's, it's amazing what they bring to the table. So, so it's very helpful to have them there. And I appreciate you bringing Rob back. Him and I have worked together for a very long time, so.
Yeah, he's built some of those other facilities in Douglas County, so.
Did this 201 steps?
Yeah, I know. Not that you were counting them, Rob.
So hopefully we'll see some event. Parker, it's interesting, Parker is the fishing area of Douglas County, Castle Rock is trails, and Lone Tree is the paddleboards and yachts. You know, can we, can we get our yacht out there or something?
I would suggest Lone Tree likes it all. At least that's the way our constituents come. They want a little bit of everything, so we're, we're excited about this, though.
So it's been, so it's been good. So we're glad to see that happen. I think that's my last slide. Yep. So any questions? It's a wonderful thing. We'd love to give you a tour if you all can get out.
Well, I think council definitely wants to take you up on that. And I think, I'll speak for myself, but I'd love to get on that incline sooner rather than later if we can. And I'm happy to hike in from the parking lot. I'll take the furthest parking spot away. So I think if we could arrange that, I think council would be very interested in seeing that. But other questions?
Just, just a longer range sort of question, Ron. The reservoir is not full at this point. You still got the plans to add more water. How's, how does that impact what you're going to do in terms of recreation facilities programming?
As far as the water level and how we add it. So we have, so it's down quite a bit, but we're still almost 100 feet deep in the, in the deepest area, and it just dipped below 20,000 acre feet. It was about two and a half, maybe three years ago, we were planning a 30,000 foot acre party because we're, we're just, it was raining. That's the year where we had all the floods and leveling and stuff. And I learned you never do that because it got, it got within 50 acre feet and we got called out of the river and it's just been a steady decline ever since. So, but that's the purpose of it. It kind of goes up and down. There is a chance where it gets so low that the recreation will be limited because it's got to be a drinking water reservoir first. We, we don't see that. We average 5,000 acre feet of water going in a year and we take out about 2,500. And so it should be climbing. It's just been really dry the last three years, really. We, we probably went almost two years without being able to pull any water off of Cherry Creek into there. And then when we did, it was only for about three months and then we got shut down again. So, you know, it's, it's going to be slow and steady until our farms project comes online. And so that project is where we bring water all the way from Sterling back to Ruder Hess. And there we have about 14,000 acre feet of water a year that we can bring back on average. Some years more, other years less. And the idea is to stockpile it in Ruder Hess, build it up, and then pull it down when needed. So that's probably in the 2035 range. So right now, what is, we, we actually restrict what we take out to 2,500 acre feet and rely on our wells still, but it's, it's a delicate balance. But it could impact it, but I don't see it for several years, unless we're just in a severe drought for the next five, six years.
Anybody else? Which, I think what I, did you have a question? You're not allowed to ask questions. No, you are. No, I, I'm curious about the operations, and I know you're not going to talk about that today, but I think we are going to want, and our residents are going to want to understand how they get access to reserving the pavilions, to, to signing up for the date, for the paddleboard days when they, when COVID lifts and, and I guess that, and then just the communication. And that's not you. And I know Rob does a great job with South Suburban, making sure that the information is flowing to residents, but I do think this is an amenity that it's going to be of increasingly But I do think this is an amenity that's going to be of increasingly importance, particularly as we develop on the east side of I-25. So we really appreciate the strong partnership that South Suburban has and the city staff have with Parker Water and Sand.
And we'll be utilizing that model, I think, from South Suburban. So I, I think we'll have a good one. They, they were talking to me, what, what does Parker Water need? It's like, ah, I need a ranger out there, you know? Because only 80% of the people are good guys. There was like 25 that aren't, 20% that aren't. And I worry about, you know, safety, the reservoir. You can't see, it's got a lot of enclaves and stuff. But, you know, you gotta, you gotta let go someday. So, you know, right now we've had paramedics out there on, on jet skis. And that's probably a level of service that's too expensive. And so we're looking at that. Got to keep it clean, someone at the gate. So they're going to take that information and boil it down to a number. And then how much the admin side of it is, the ones that it's, how do you, how do you sign up for events and stuff like that? And that needs to be turned over to someone that knows what they're doing. So it's coming soon.
Yeah, we're excited. And thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight and.
My pleasure.
Share this. And Rob's going to schedule a tour for us, I hope. Rob, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, I'm just here for the meeting.
Okay. Yeah, well, we always appreciate seeing you. We always appreciate seeing you. So thank you. Thank you both for, for making the time for Lone Tree. We appreciate it.
Good to see you all.
Okay, take good care.
Thanks, Rob.
All right. Next on the, we're going from recreation to public safety, and we love it. So it's going to be update from, on, from the PD on the TASER and body camera upgrades. And so Chief, you're going to start it off? Is that correct? That's, that's, that's what my notes tell me. You are the lead. And then it looks we're bringing in Corporal Maddox and Travis Sneed, who are somewhere waiting in the wings.
So I thought it would be a good idea for them to come in and, you know, you guys, one, great investment for the police department. We appreciate it. So we've got those, we've got them implemented. Travis and Kyle were instrumental in getting all that work done. They're our instructors. And then they have been, even through COVID, we've had them cancel things and had some other issues, but they were able to get basically everybody trained on the, on these two items. And we're getting the cameras in the holding cells and interview rooms installed this week. So I'm going to turn it over to them and let them present, because I figured they are the experts, I'm not, so.
Come on up, Chief. You bet.
Well, it's good to see you guys. Hope you're staying safe and doing well.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate you guys giving us the time. Mayor, Council, we appreciate you guys having us here tonight to, to kind of go over and kind of show you all just a thanks of what you guys provided to us and how much it really is going to help every officer out there. There's just been overwhelming amount of thanks coming from the officers after getting them trained up of the, the new technology that came out. And that's really accustomed to the, the work that the chief put in for us. And then the, the support that you guys continue to give us every day. And we can't be more thankful to work in the city than we do, that we have such a supportive council. So we'll just get started with what you guys gave us. Do you have anything more on that?
No. Like Kyle said, thank you guys very much for all the support you guys give us. And, you know, it definitely shows with the officers, as far as their jobs that they do out there, the difference in between the cities who really do support their, their police department. So thank you guys very much for making our jobs a lot easier and now a little bit more efficient. So thank you.
All right. All right, so with the body cameras that we had, we, the previous generations, we, we've had them from the very beginning, the first generation, second generation, and now this new and third generation. Really what it came down to is, the, the big part of it was the noise portion. But we rely on these so much for the audio feedback to go back and review for court purposes, and the courts rely on them as well. And there was really only one microphone on the previous generations. And any type of wind, you've probably heard it on your cell phone before, that's pretty much all you could hear. So it'd pretty much be worthless of having it. So that was really blocked out with the previous one. The battery life, the first generation, we couldn't even replace the batteries once they died. We kind of just had to make do with what we had. The second generation, batteries would last right around that 10 hour mark. So if you had to stay any later than your shift, generally you would start running out of time, so you'd have to shut your camera off and have to remember to turn it back on. So that was one of the things. With the new body cams now, there's an on and off button. So you have to push and hold that button. Previous generations, it was a slide switch. So if you got into a tussle with somebody or anything like that, it was actually pretty easy to shut it off, which is not what we were looking for or wanting. So thankfully they've updated that on this one. And then muting our devices. So we do mute our devices anytime we have a counseling session with each other or with the supervisor, just to talk about kind of what we have with the case. It has really no relevance to do with the court purposes of it. So we mute it during that. A lot of times, though, officers would forget to unmute it when they go back and interact. So you'll see on the new devices here, we have a nice big display up top now. And then there's a lot better, it's a visual symbol that shows when we're muted in it. The bright blue light now flashes, so it helps us know when we're muted, so we can see that. And then the previous ones didn't have any volume or light control. So when you guys work in nighttime, this bright light would be flashing your face. You'd have to either put a piece of tape over it, they'd cover it up a little bit. So that's been fixed on this one. And then also, uh, volume. We can change the volume, so we can hear it till we know it's recording, because it will give us an audible feedback when it's recording or muted, stuff like that. And really, with technology advancing, we're seeing the advancements of the quality of the camera. So this is really the top quality camera that is on the market today, and we've been privy to have that now. So, next one. So really, the, the purpose of the body cameras is so heavily relied on. I mean, at first, I think body cameras you hear, it's like, oh no, everybody's watching now. I can't imagine, and I know the guys who work, can't imagine not having one now. Really, it's capturing the event in its entirety. It's not like what you see on the news where they put what they want out of it. It's not our word versus against their, you know, against their word anymore. It's the entire truth is out there now. And we really understand it does protect us as well as it does the citizens. And really with complaint procedures, it helps exonerate officers a lot faster. You know, people can make complaints of rudeness or other things like that. And the officer, supervisor, the sergeant, the corporal can go in and look at those things and just really quickly, you know, determine if there is actually an issue or if this person just had a bad day and they're just trying to get back at the officer for, for it is what it is. And really, we've been in compliance with now Senate Bill 217. That really says we have to have, you know, the, the body cams now. And we're fortunate that we've had that, so this is just keeping us in compliance. And really, the, the recorded statements and the interview portion of it, that's, that's the big part. I mean, we interview a lot of people every day, witnesses, victims is the important ones. You really get to see that emotional side of stuff now. It's easy, it's, you can't, you can type in a report what they said, but when the jury gets to see their emotion behind it, it really has that more, it has a more impact statement, really, that goes along with that as well. And then finally, with the other stuff too, is we capture pretty much everything now with body cameras and our cell phones. It's all encompassing now with all of our evidence capturing. We take all of our pictures on there. We can record statements, we can upload direct files, everything like that. And it all goes into one central location, so we're not having to get a bunch of different information from a bunch of different places. So it makes it easy on that stuff. So, and again, like we put on there, it's identified as the most important tool in law enforcement today. So I think that's going to be reiterated a lot here today. All right, so this is the Axon Body 3. That's what you see us wearing here. That's on our chest right here. This is that nice new device that you see here. So with this one, now it has at least a 12 hour battery life. So again, it's, it's going to last that extra time if we do have to stay late or we go to court. So it's a lot longer now, a lot better camera, wider view. So you get to see a little bit more area. The high quality 720 view, it is water rated and protected, so we don't have to worry about rain, you know, covering it up or anything like that, if that's an issue. It does have a GPS embedded in it. So that's pretty cool that we can go back and see exactly where we're at. And it actually tracks every bit of our movements. It'll track slowly from the time we were there to when we drove to the, to the courts or wherever. It, it tracks everything. LTE connectivity, so there is the capability that they, they can be viewed remotely by a supervisor, stuff like that. We don't have that ability right now, which, but we'll, we'll, it's just not something we felt like is needed right now. We don't have like a big, large crime scenes that we need to get a lot of people in. That big LCD display on the top, that's probably the newest, best feature that we see here. It tells us when it's ready, when it's recording, when it's muted, and when we can, we really just shows your battery percentage and shows when the video is uploading or whatever had be. A pretty cool feature with this one is called multi-can playback, so we can play multiple videos on one screen at a time. We'll show you guys that actually here in a second, so you guys can kind of get a view of what that looks like. And again, that Axon Aware is that part of that program that's got the GPS built in.
So Kyle, before you move on, I guess one of the things that was most concerning to me about the old generation is the battery dying.
Absolutely.
For our officers when you're out in the middle of probably a sensitive time. So how are you made aware of your battery life? And is there an ability to charge or in your vehicles or? Because to me, I don't even think 12 hours is enough. I mean, I would like to see it lasting longer or the ability to charge.
Absolutely. So part of this is really nice is with that, that screen up top here, we see the percentage. So I see right now my battery is at 97%. So it's nice to kind of keep that in mind. We do have the ability, we do have cables that we can charge right off of a computer. We all have computers in our cars, so there is that capability, absolutely. And then what's nice about this one too, is we can actually take a spare body camera and check it out to you on the spot. And you have another body camera. If yours goes down right now, we have the ability to check out a brand new one to you within seconds.
Okay.
Which all with just tapping it on top of a cell phone and assigning it to you. So we have a lot of new features with this one that we didn't have with the prior generations, and the batteries are actually replaceable on these as well. So if it does start going bad or not holding that charge, we just reach out to them, they send us a new battery, and we replace it.
So I'm so not staying in my lane, but I'm going to ask this question anyway. So is there a policy that you, if your battery falls below X, you've got to? Like what's the minimum your battery is? I mean, I know, and there's always exceptions, and there's no hard fast rule on this, but is there kind of a working procedure for you guys? If your battery falls below 20%, you, you've got to go back and get, get a chart, or is that, no?
So we don't have anything specifically written in policy for a certain percentage, if you will. But it is ultimately the officer's responsibility, it is written in there, to maintain and ensure that the battery life is sufficient. We have to do a test at the beginning and the end of our shift, or more so beginning of our shifts, to make sure the audio and video quality and all that's working. And that's part of the, the checkout process to make sure your battery is sufficient. You will start getting notifications and warnings though, if your battery is low.
Okay.
We review all of our, we can review the videos on our cell phone, and it tells us in right at the very top, the battery percentage. So it's like in your face a lot throughout the day, because after every recording you do, you have to label it. So we're constantly checking that. But specifically as to a percentage.
That's fine. I was just curious how you, because it is important.
Very.
Yeah.
Yeah, so 12 plus hours. So they, they have to say it's going to at least, it'll last at least 12 hours. But really, that because we're not using that live streaming feature, the batteries will last longer. Part of the reason we didn't go with that as well. And the usage will help last longer. So I think they put that in there for large agencies that are, you're using them a lot throughout the day. I haven't seen my battery in a 10 hour shift go below 60%.
Oh, good. Okay.
Yours is, yeah. He works all day.
Travis works harder than you. His might be falling below.
He just, he may do it.
So I'm almost at 12 hours with this thing, and it's at 36%.
There you go. So.
Thank you.
So what you'll see here is, it's actually pretty dramatic on here, which is nice. On the left, you'll see is the new Body 3. This is Jeff, Sergeant Jeff Gould's camera on the, the left. And on the right is Officer Stagmire's Body 2 camera. So you'll see there's a very significant difference right now in the light quality in the, what you're capturing. So we'll actually play a little video of this for you. Yeah, I think you got to go back and, I don't know if you want to help.
So this clearly isn't in Lone Tree, because nothing.
The last picture is not in Lone Tree. This is in Lone Tree. What, with this video, hopefully we'll get it to work and play here, is we had cars being broken into over at Ed Bozart. They were trying to steal the cars after breaking into them. Our Graves officers got the call and saw that the people were smashing in the windows, and then they took off running. So that's what you'll see in this video here, if, if we can get it up and running here. Just to show you, and this is that multi-can we were talking about, that you can see multiple videos at once. We'll get it logged in here in just a quick sec. So yeah, this is nice, it's a nice tool that we can use now for the courts. The detectives really like this feature, because they can see all different views at the same time. We can watch up to four cameras all at once. Once we get logged in.
They need a login.
Yeah, that's fine. So does council have any questions on, yeah, Jake?
Yeah, just, I, I know we were early adopters to all this technology, and I know it keeps evolving. And I know they'll, they'll keep creating updates every year. What's the shelf life of, of this version? I don't know the for sure shelf life. What I do know is that we signed a contract with Axon, and the chief can probably speak more on this, he might know more. But we signed a contract with them now that we're pretty much on that lease program. Before, we did an à la carte purchase program, where this is more of a lease, where at the end of it, we will get new equipment that's going to continue on.
So it's every two and a half years.
Okay, refresh, yeah.
We'll get those replaced. And then on the TASER, it's every five years.
Awesome. So that's pretty substantial and pretty beneficial to us, because again, yes, it does change a lot in that.
Hopefully that'll mitigate the batteries degrading like they did, because we had these cameras for so long, the batteries degraded. So this'll probably, you know, you get them replaced in two and a half years.
Yeah, I'd imagine then the battery life is extended, and then it gets smaller. It's probably going to get more and more compact and more functionality, so.
And how many do we have? How many are in the department now?
Officers?
No, the cameras.
The cameras, I think we purchased 50, 55.
55?
Yes, 55 of cameras and tasers. So we do have backups and extras if we do have them go down, or we hire more officers, so.
And you had said, we're not using the live stream remote.
Correct.
But does the video itself live update? Or at the end of the video, does the?
So everything is stored directly on the device until we put it in the dock. That's, that's required at the end of every shift, is you have to dock it. And from there, it goes into evidence.com, which is the housing of all of our evidence, if you will. So, yeah, we, we can't change anything on it. We can't, all we can do is label the video, and we put the case number, and we may put like what type of incident it is. And from there, it's, it's, it's in the cloud, if you will.
And you, you, but you can play it back to help you with your report writing. And you, but you can play it back to help you with your report writing.
Yes. So we have that ability to watch it right on our phone or we can use that cable that we connect to the computer and watch it on the computer. Or after we dock it, it does take a little bit to upload, but then we can go back in and watch it from there. So really that's the greatest part is court cases go two, three years later. And this is a huge tool to go back and watch what happened to really refresh that. So that helps a lot. And I think we're ready here.
Awesome.
So yes, you'll see on the right, that's Officer Stagmire's video. Same nighttime, same location, really. They're both responding, lights and sirens at nighttime. So you'll see the big difference now between Sergeant Gould's camera, who's got the new one, and Officer Stagmire, who had the old camera at nighttime. And this is really going to be beneficial to us when we're trying to identify suspects or we come in contact with witnesses that may have provided us, you know, false information or, you know, we need to identify them later. Having that ability to see them is going to be big, so.
Your incident has been affected.
Yeah, that's a suspect there. That's the truck they ran into. They're in the parking lot of Barnes and Noble right now. That's where they ran to. But again, you'll see the big difference in really just the quality of video at nighttime is really important. So there's just a short snippet for you there. Any questions on that? All right.
Did you get them?
Got them.
Good. Good. No more Ed Bozarth break-ins.
No more Ed Bozarth break-ins. So this is not Loan Tree. This is one of the photos from Axon.
I was like, can you clarify? Not in Loan Tree.
Not in Loan Tree, yes.
Is it Trio?
Is that Trio, yeah.
Oh my gosh, I can't even believe you said that.
So the one on the left is the old Body 2. The one on the right is the new Body 3. So a lot more advanced. And this is really beneficial in any sort of identification purposes for that. So that's a big advancement in that. All right. And then we'll just hit on this stuff real quick. Axon Citizen, this is a pretty cool perk that we kind of got with this contract through them is now we have the ability to reach out to citizens and have them provide us documents. So say you have a victim of a fraud. Before we would have to either go to their house or we'd have to go help them get all their documents. We may have to take their documents from them, take them to the police department, scan them all in. And sometimes those just become evidence where now this Axon Citizen, and COVID was a big help with this in unfortunate way, that this is an electronic version now that we have the ability to send somebody a link through our phone and let them upload evidence themselves. So if they're a victim of a fraud, they have all their bank statements on their phone, they can just put them directly into this without having to have us even have face-to-face contact if they're not comfortable doing that to, then the evidence is just right there and it goes right in. So I can show you the next screen. I think that's all here. So this is what we see on our end. We just go to Citizen, we type in either their phone number or their email address. We put in all the information for them so they can't mess it up. Our case number, you know, the type of event it is, we do all that. Next slide. And then this is what they get on their end. They get a link. This is showing the text message side of stuff. So they click that link. It's a one-time use thing. It's not like they can go back and keep uploading everything. They hit submit evidence and then they have the ability, like I said, photos. So we get like harassment with text messages, right? Like ex-boyfriends texting them over and over again. So we can get a copy of all of those. So next one, you'll see that they choose the pictures that they want to add in and at the very end that they get to submit it. So they hit submit and you can go next one. And then from there they're done. They can't upload anything more. What's then on our end is we can go into evidence.com and we can review all that evidence. And we get to decide whether we accept it or decline it. Say it's something that it's not relevant, we didn't ask for that piece of, we don't want that going into evidence.com. Say they sent us a social security card that they didn't mean to or something like that, then we don't have to accept that. And it's also, I mean, but part of this process is too, is you know, it's still our responsibility to work with these people to ensure that we're getting all the information we need. It's not all in there. The ball's not always in their court, but it just, it does help us to really help the citizen feel comfortable and you know.
Efficient, yeah.
Very efficient.
The biggest thing that you didn't mention is we collect hundreds, thousands even of videos a year. Now the, if we can get the stores, the law enforcement people do it, they can upload their videos directly into
Oh.
Into this evidence.com. It's going to save us a tremendous amount of time on the CSO's part or the officer's part, trying to go back and collect those videos all the time from them. Now, once we get them trained, they can just do this themselves. So that'll be a huge, huge help.
And when, have you already implemented Axon Citizen?
So right now the CSOs have it and then the five or four of us that are instructors have it. We're working through, seeing what problems may come about. So far, thankfully, just to, you know, just recently Axon did a really big update where they accepted more style or more video types. So I used it at the mall, Park Meadows Mall, using their security footage and it worked flawlessly. We've used it at Home Depot, Skyridge Hospital. So it does eliminate, because before we'd have to either get it on a CD or a flash drive and then we'd have to go through a separate program to upload it all. And it was very, it was very time consuming. So this is very, very efficient and unfortunate that we have this ability now, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Does it take ring video, videos?
It does, yeah. And I know that that's going to be a huge help, you know, with the car break-ins and stuff like that. And we can actually, if we do have like a string of break-ins in a, on one street, we can send a link out to a certain group of people and allow them to upload their ring footage to a detective. The detective is the one that can, can review that and then they can shut that link off once they've collected all the evidence they need. So yeah, it's really cool. All right.
Kyle?
Yes, sir.
I know it's a question for you as the chief. Are there any privacy issues with using the cameras? Should it be in private property versus public property?
Well, they are. They're addressed to our policy, but essentially it really only pertains if we're in someone's private residence or something like that or in the hospital or if we're out on the street talking to somebody, there isn't. But if we are in your house and you request us not to have it on and you're a victim or, you know, and you don't, you want that privacy, then we will shut it, shut it off. But I don't think many people ask you guys to do that.
I've never had somebody ask me.
And then in hospital rooms, you know, obviously there are some issues there. So they may end up shutting it off there if the doctor's talking to them and then we turn it back on when we come back in and interview them, so.
Yeah, I think in terms of a domestic violence call, two parties not agreeing with each other, not wanting to be videoed, one, okay, well, how do you deal with that?
Well, that we probably would not shut them off because we have a right to be there at that point. There was a crime committed, we were called to that residence to investigate a crime. It's a crime scene. So that's a little different that if I'm just with you and you're home and you're telling me about your car got broken into or what have you. But if we're there, it's an active scene, you know, one, we're there for an emergency situation, then we're going to leave it on.
And doesn't 217, SB 217 would require?
Yeah, there's just some victim stuff in the, in Senate Bill, talks a little bit about victims because originally it did say all the time, no matter what.
Right.
And then we got some input in there, they realized, okay, there are going to be situations where we need to shut the camera off for the privacy of people, so.
That's a good question.
All right. So really again, just to sum this up with the body cams and we'll move on to TASER here real quick. So really just a higher resolution camera, it's a lot better visual at nighttime. So it's really going to be a huge help on that. Much higher quality. So this one's now got four microphones on it versus just one. So that the whole sound issue is not there anymore. We've tested it out and pretty much straight wind and you can hear full-on conversations. That a lot smoother motion capture and then that large LCD screen that'll help us really see and keep up with our recording if, and it's also vibrates. So we feel it when it's recording. So to activate it, you'd have to push it twice and then every 30 seconds it vibrates and makes an audible beep. And then when we shut it off, you have to push and hold it and then it'll make a long vibration and a long beep. So you know when you're, when you're shut off, so. And it tells us everything going on up top here.
Great.
Yeah, all right. So now we'll move on to TASER for you guys.
All right, thanks. That was wonderful. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right, Travis, what you got?
We got great, a great product in my opinion. The previous ones had a lot of inefficiencies and some downfalls and, you know, some of the, some of the problems with the previous one was the X26 and then they came out with the X26P. It had a very high deployment failure and that was kind of due to the cartridges and the styles of the cartridges that they had. So the downfall to that was then officers were a lot less likely to use them in situations that they probably should have or could have, which led to, you know, more suspects getting hurt, unfortunately officers getting hurt and, you know, sometimes deadly force situations occurring when it could have been avoided. So that was probably the biggest thing is lack of confidence with the previous devices, which I hope will go up with the new device because you guys will see a video here in a minute of kind of the differences and kind of their critiques. And I think Axon did a great job of going and looking at research and making corrections where they need to be made to make their devices a lot more efficient and user-friendly. So the, as I mentioned, the old cartridges, they were all hand spooled. So somebody was doing them all by hand. Now they're done by a machine and so their process has got a lot more efficient too. There was a single deployment, I think, you know, when you guys went through my TASER Citizen Academy, you guys got to deploy a TASER cartridge and it was a single deployment. Now we have two deployments available to us within the device right now. And then it's very easy to get two more. So whereas previously officers only had two deployments on the road, now we have four. So that's good. And the biggest difference is they do have different angles. So depending on how far we are away from somebody or depending on the situation, we can change those out and have different angles and that kind of thing. We have on the new devices, there are two lasers. So where those lasers are is where you're going to hit. So it's very easy for me to, you know, deploy my laser or deploy my TASER, activate it, two lasers go on the person and that is where that's going to hit. So previously the other ones did not have that and sometimes we did have misses or what have you. So that's a lot better. Post-deployment deficiencies, there's a lot of them. The new cartridges, we used to have to collect these little, I guess they were confetti, they were called AFIDS. They had the serial number to the cartridge on them. I think they had what 40 some plus AFIDS that would pop out. Not only were they messy for training, but they were just not really great because you'd have to at least collect one for our policy and book that into evidence with your TASER cartridge. And when it was windy, finding one was not exactly easy. And not to mention they are now being discontinued by Axon because they're hand spooled and so on and so forth. So with the old TASER, we did have the option to complete an arc, but it was kind of not really user-friendly for the officer to do that. Because what he would have to do is he'd have to remove the TASER cartridge, arc the TASER, which essentially deploys a electrical arc on the front of the TASER device and then put the cartridge back if he wanted to deploy. Now that with the new TASER 7, we have an arc switch, which you simply just push and it displays, it displays the arc across the front of the TASER. So that is a de-escalation tactic because it's not, I mean, it's kind of a mean, you know, arc. And so when, you know, I'm telling you, I'm giving you verbal commands to stop whatever you're doing and you don't, and then I arc that TASER towards you, you, I think there's going to be a lot of people that stop what they're doing. I think we had, we didn't have one specifically the other day, but I think there was somebody talking about it in one of the trainings of, they deployed an arc switch towards a guy and the guy was like, I've been tased before, nope, I ain't going there again. And he stuck his hands up and gave up. So ultimately that is what we want to do as law enforcement is, you know, use, minimum use, use of force as necessary to control a situation. And I really hope these new TASERS will do that. And I really foresee them being a huge advantage for Loan Tree and the Loan Tree Police Department to do that. Like I said before, the, I hope the confidence level goes up within the officers. So they're more inclined to use them for de-escalation tactics. And I mean, to put it bluntly, it's, it's a life-saving tool. You know, these situations are rapidly evolving and if we can, you know, correct action before it escalates to a deadly force situation, then that gives us the better hand and, you know.
Just to piggyback on this. So the Senate Bill has some very specific language about use of force. So we did rewrite TASER policy a little bit to make sure that we had adhered to Senate Bill 217. But the key is, is that, you know, when TASER first came out, TASER and was advocated to basically you ask, you tell, you tase. I mean, that was almost the way that they trained the officers originally. So the idea was not to go hands-on, but you've asked someone, you know, you have a lawful order that you're giving them to do, you know, put your hands behind your back, you're under arrest. You tell them, right, a little more forcefully and then the next thing we know, we're going to have the TASER out. So one of the things that's, that is pretty clear in the bill is you cannot use the TASER unless you're, unless there's an active threat against you. So if someone's just running from you, there was a, at first they were using TASER to actually apprehend people. So that's kind of slowed down. We haven't done that for, it's been a while, I think, since we tased anybody that was just running from us. It's pretty dangerous if someone's running full tilt, you know, depending on what kind of surface they're on. There's still a ton of rules about when, but the bottom line is now it has to be a direct threat to yourself or someone else or themselves. So the cool thing about the TASER is, is that one, you could have lethal force out and the TASER out, right? So let's say someone had a knife, right? And you could at least attempt to tase them instead of shooting them as long as you have lethal somewhere, right, on the playground. And then if you had, and then if you have somebody that's suicidal with a knife, I mean, really, we didn't have a lot of tools back in the day. You just had to talk to them and hopefully they put it down. And if they made an aggressive move, your next thing was you'd shoot them, right? So with the TASER, now you can be, you know, 20 feet away with someone with a knife and just tase them so you can get the knife out of their hand to stop, you know, from being suicidal, what have you. So it does open up a lot of, and this TASER is so much better than the other one with the distances and, and he'll get into that. So let's keep going. But it is a pretty, pretty cool tool, I think.
So kind of one of the things that, you know, use of force with the TASER, once the deployment's over, it's over. You might feel like you just went through, you know, a little jog or whatever, but that, I mean, it's the, the effects of the TASER are very minimal. So once it's over, it's over. People can fight, whatever, or they can comply. But that's, that's kind of the cool thing about the TASER is once that cycle is done, it's done.
So it's not as debilitating for the person being tased? Is that what you're saying?
So during the actual deployment, yes, it is very debilitating.
Right.
And you'll hear in the video, it's called NMI. It's neuromuscular incapacitation.
Okay.
And that's what the TASER does and affects. I mean, it affects your central nervous system to where your body just locks up. And there's some new, I mean, this is why this TASER a lot better than the other one is called Rapid Arc. So it gets to that higher level first and then comes down where the other one was more of a gradual incline. This one gets to it first and then starts coming down. So you have that instant lockup or you have that quicker effect, whereas the other one did not.
But you know how on TV and movies where they show someone getting tased and the person's like out for an hour or something?
Right, right.
Yeah, that's not.
As soon as it's over, the pain is done completely, you can do anything that you could have done prior to the tasing.
And how long is that episode, chief? Like how long?
Like five seconds.
Yeah, it's five seconds.
But is it enough to give the officer the time to get the suspect under control or handcuffed?
Well, it could be enough time for them to get, you know, at least get some weight on them so that you can get the cuffs on. But really what you're going to do is as soon as it's over, trust me, it gets, it gets their attention. They typically are complying after, okay, I told you again, because they could always pull the trigger.
Okay.
Right, yeah.
Yep. So it, you know, if we tase somebody and he didn't, it didn't click for him the first time that we mean business and he gets up and starts charging us, we can hit the trigger again. And with those darts still in him, he's going to get that full five seconds again. Now with that is new use of force and we have to justify every trigger pull and so on and so forth. But we can, we do have options and, you know, we are becoming more efficient as far as our force-on-force training within the police department. We're going to start training cuffing under power. So that means as soon as that TASER deploys and that person has that effect of the TASER, the officers are going handcuffing and getting that going. That way they don't have that, we're at all standing there for five seconds waiting for this guy to get back up. You know what I mean? So I think that'll be more efficient for us as well. So this is the TASER 7. As you can see, there are two cartridges. The, inside the two black circles, top and bottom, that is one cartridge and then the other cartridge is on the other side. This is the new TASER 7 versus the old X26. So as you can see, our old X26Ps, they were black, that's why we use this picture. Our new ones are yellow. So that is very distinguishable, distinguishable between a firearm and a TASER. And these are louder. So I, I think it's a great idea that we did go with the yellow because they are louder. You know, somebody can easily misconstrue on the street, that officer just shot that person.
Right.
When, no, we just deployed a TASER. See if we can get this video.
I don't think we're going to have time.
We have continued to refine our NMI technology with a new optimization we call Rapid Arc. TASER 7 delivers each electric arc about 20% faster. Also, we increased the number of pulses from 19 to 22 pulses per second.
I think you already explained everything you're about to explain.
Both of these optimizations improve the inquity margin.
So this is comparison between the new probes and the old probes. The X-26 probe is more like a whale harpoon, for lack of better terms. And the way it was deployed, it wouldn't fly true. So it'd kind of zigzag in the air like this as it's flying through the air, until it's stabilized, and then it would finally fly true. The new probes, they're more cylinder, similar to like a bullet. They fly true right out of the gate, which is good. And the wire is spooled inside the cylinder, as you can see, where the other one was on the back. So that helps deployment accuracy, but it also helps better penetration. A lot of the old TASERS and the probes, when they would get into like thicker clothing or something like that, they just didn't have the impact to get through the clothes and into the skin. And that's what that probe needs to have effect, is to get actually to the skin. These new probes, they have much better impact because of their flight path and stability, and it packs a little bit more of a punch to get through those clothes. So specifically, you know, wintertime, big winter ski jackets or, you know, the big puffies are coming back into trend, so that really helps get into those clothes for people who are wearing those types of bigger, bulkier clothing. And, you know, shoplifters, when they're running or what have you, they fight us at the mall. It's amazing how many clothes come off when, you know, that they just stole from Park Meadows Mall. So that will help this TASER be more efficient as far as actually making the contact with the person, getting that NMI, and having the effect that we want it to have. Where the other one, that was a big shortfall for that TASER. And it's a lot of the reasons why the officers were very reluctant to even try and use it, because, I don't want to say there was so much failure rate, but, I mean, it was, it was high. So, good. So this is the ARC's, ARC display. Should be a video, it's very small. So you can see that electrical pulse come across the front of the TASER, and at night, it's even that much brighter.
It's loud.
And it's loud. So that is a good visual deterrent for somebody who, when we're saying, "If you don't stop, we're going to tase you," and then we, you know, display that, that is going to be a great visual deterrent, and hopefully, get people to stop whatever they're doing. And that was not even an option, pretty much, for the previous TASER, without taking that cartridge off. So this is also a smart weapon. This makes our lives a lot easier as TASER instructors. So this is post-deployment, or even, you know, just getting new batteries and this and that and the other. The old TASERS, everything had to be done through a TASER instructor. When we had a deployment, the officer would have to get with one of us. We would have to plug the TASER into the computer, download the graphs to the computer, then send it up into evidence.com, as a lot of moves, right? This is all stored in the battery. They literally walk in, they plug their battery into the port, and the battery does a download, it downloads it all, goes into evidence.com. They can look at their own pulse graphs. Essentially, a pulse graph is, shows us if there was good connectivity with the probes and the skin and what have you. They label it with their own case number. They then can attach it to their use-of-force report, and they're done. They don't have to get us involved or anything like that. The other thing it does do too, is when Axon sends out new firmware updates, all they have to do is go get a new battery that's been downloaded.
Excuse me. That's loud.
Bless you.
Wow. Has the TASER compared to that?
The officer just has to go get a new battery, plug it into their TASER, and they got the new firmware right there. So that is a big efficiency without involving a lot of other people. They can just do it on their own. So to sum it up, this is a smarter weapon. It has a lot of good effects for officers. It is more accurate, the cartridges, the darts for the cartridges fly true. The other thing I missed about the cartridge, the other ones could be set off by static. These ones actually have to have a code to be deployed. So if you were to put the old cartridge in your pocket, if there's static electricity in there, that thing would go off. This is not that way. Hopefully, more officer confidence. I've already heard some officers say that they are more confident in this. Secondary cartridge if needed. They don't have to do a cartridge exchange, it's automatically there. And it's just overall more efficient system and process post-deployment and everything else, so. Do you guys have any questions?
Questions for Travis? Yeah, Jay, you can't use it on your children, no?
No, exactly. Well, I was going to say, these are much better than the ones that Kyle used to use on my kids at Lone Tree Elementary. But on average, I know, obviously, it's going to vary, but how often are we actually using a TASER?
I think last year, I only did maybe four or five downloads. I think Kyle did about the same.
Yes.
So eight to 10 a year. Now with those having effect, last year was actually pretty good. I think we only had one that wasn't effective. The previous year, there was a lot more. It was more like 80% that was not effective.
Wow.
Gwen?
And I was going to say, when I did the Citizens Police Academy, the first fire of the TASER failed, and we learned at that point, I mean, that's not a good experience. No confidence, so I'm really glad these are more reliable. And I wanted to ask also, so those little paper tags, they don't exist anymore? They simply track their, that they were used?
That's correct.
Okay.
So they don't have any more aphids that come out?
That's great.
Essentially, we still do collect the cartridge and the probes for evidence, but we don't have to try and track down little aphids that are blowing around the street or what have you. We just have to collect the probes, the cartridge, and book those into evidence. It's all tracked within the TASER device itself. So it's very, it's very user-friendly in that aspect.
That's great. Thank you. Kath, Mike, anything?
I don't want to be shot by one.
No.
It's not fun.
No, I don't think anybody does. I think you're not alone in that.
As officer confidence builds in these, is there any concern with policy in terms of people using them too regularly?
I would say no. Our policy has gotten a lot more strict. So when we started setting this up, we looked through a lot of case law. The, when I say "we," I mean, obviously, command staff, but us as a TASER group, training organization, looked at a lot of case laws and so on and so forth. And some of the incidents out there, the use of the TASER were completely asinine. I don't think we have any officers who would go to that extreme, so to speak. But it has gotten a lot more restrictive as far as we have to believe that we are in danger, we have an imminent threat of bodily harm to us, another person, or themselves. Whereas, you know, when I first came to Lone Tree, it was a lot more lenient than that. And it's, as far as, we don't really have a force continuum anymore, but it's, it's up there as far as the use of force, and, you know, we have to have a good articulable reason to be deploying that. So I see it, you know, as something that's, you know, it'll probably be more used as a de-escalation tactic versus the actual deployment of the probes and actually tasing somebody.
And I think there is specific written documentation for when they are allowed to use them or not use them. It isn't a discretionary thing in the sense of, there are rules, and then obviously, there is some officer discretion, but, but no, I mean, I think these are very important tools in law enforcement. And I guess, you know, Chief, looking back on your career, I bet you didn't envision the importance of these two things when you first started out in...
When I first started out, I had a pen and a radio.
Right.
Now, there's a lot more things.
Yeah, but I think as a society and a community, particularly in light of everything that the officers are dealing with and that our public is dealing with, that these are the type of things we need to be investing in as a community, and making sure there's rules, policies, practices, and good training in place. So I really very much appreciate you both coming this evening and sharing your knowledge with us. And also, I think it's important that we understand everything that goes behind the training, the policy, the practice. And we want to make sure you guys are as equipped, well-equipped as you can be, that we can afford to have you equipped, that you stay safe, that you're going home to your families, and that we're keeping the public safe. And I think that cameras in particular, I'm very, very proud of the fact that Lone Tree was on the front end of having body cameras. And I am thrilled to hear you both acknowledge that, from your perspectives as frontline, that these are tools, that you don't want to be out on the street without them today. And I think it speaks to the great leadership within the organization. So I know it's been a trying time. I want you to know, on behalf of council and this community, how much confidence and faith we have in the department and in you too. And that things, you know, when we see something like this in a budget, it's kind of like, okay, and the chief makes the case for why you need it. And I think it's very important, and I've shared this with council, I learned so much going through the police academy. I think it's a great, and I was in a space in my life with my family that I could do it. So I think it really is invaluable, and having you guys come tonight is important. So I want to say thank you very much for prioritizing it, Chief. Thank you for arranging it, this is good.
Thank you guys very much for all the support you guys rendered towards us. You know, it doesn't go unseen, so please do know that. And, you know, thank you for giving us the tools and everything that we asked for to help keep us safe and, you know, negate some liability down the road for all of us, right?
Right, and ideally, you'll never use them. But you have them should you need them, so, right. And I think one of the things we'll be interested in understanding is the metrics of the confidence with the officers too, as that moves forward. And that's just anecdotal, I'm curious about it now.
Yeah.
So, okay, anything else from anyone else on this? I know we're a little bit behind, but don't put two of, don't put officers and, you know, technology in front of us, and not expect to have a lot. Delay of game, so thank you guys both, and stay safe.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, guys.
All right, moving on, because we do have a lot on this study session. And I know Jacob is waiting in the wings here on the In-N-Out Traffic Management Plan update. And actually, this is a very, very important subject. And I think it's something that we, as council, are going to be hearing a lot about. And I think it's important we understand it. So Jacob, I know, did a lot of great work with a whole host of folks. But Jacob, the floor is yours. In-N-Out Traffic Management Plan update.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. We did want to come before Council this evening, just to give you an update on where In-N-Out is with the Opening Day Traffic Management Operations Plan. So we will be doing that now, and we'll go to the next slide. So in April, essentially, In-N-Out received their final Public Works and Engineering approval from the city, so on April 28th, we issued that to In-N-Out. We only had one condition, and that condition was they needed to work with staff throughout their construction process to develop an operations plan for opening day. The condition was they needed to provide that to the city, and the city to approve it before they get certificate of occupancy of the building. So in the time since they've got their approval, up until July 28th, they did work with us to develop a plan. And we put together a good idea of a plan, but we wanted to get public input and feedback. So on July 28th, we did that. We hosted a public meeting with In-N-Out to present what we believed was a good plan to minimize impacts to the surrounding businesses and neighbors, while also accommodating all the people that wanted to go to In-N-Out and get their burger. Slide, please. So the crux of that plan essentially were, we needed to work with In-N-Out to follow some criteria so that everybody was accommodated. So criteria involved no blocking allowed on Westview Road and Parkland Road. An off-site loading and queuing area needed to be identified as part of their plan. On private property, that was kind of a key component of that as well. And then we needed to provide messaging around the area to direct traffic to the appropriate locations when off-site queuing was needed or just general information was needed to people who were trying to access the area. We also had a condition for In-N-Out that they did need to provide a local contact so that we could call somebody up if something wasn't working quite right, and we'd have immediate access to somebody who could pull the trigger on doing some tweaks on the fly. The plan also, we also recognized that there's probably more than just signage to direct folks around. So they are prepared to provide uniform traffic control officers. In this case, more than likely, going to be private officers that will be directing traffic to their appropriate locations. All of these criteria, obviously, had to have a big focus on minimizing all the impacts to the adjacent properties, accommodating them, and also getting In-N-Out all of their patrons in an efficient way as well, so.
So not a lot to accomplish there, for you.
No, not too much at all, yeah. But I think we got there, or getting, very close to getting there. So from tonight, the next steps that we need to take with this plan with In-N-Out is obviously present to council, as we're doing now. And a week from tonight, we will be hosting our second public meeting for all of surrounding businesses and interested parties to essentially show them the tweaks we made from the first public meeting, and then solicit input, both from you all and also the business owners and the interested parties again, to make sure that any final tweaks that we need to make to the plan, we have time to do that before they actually open. And then with that, we'll be taking the month of November to get all that lined out, the tweaks done, and then they're tentatively scheduled, or hoping to schedule for ACO in early December. So the plans we're going to show you tonight were basically the culmination of staff reviewing several different management scenarios with In-N-Out and with the local businesses to make sure that, you know, everybody's input was received and vetted. And these plans, we believe, do provide the best, most efficient way of moving all the traffic throughout the area. When, you know, fingers crossed, a ton of traffic is in the area in the holiday season. So what we'll show you is the overall plan, the general area plan, and then how it also addresses local business access around the area too. So we'll go to the first plan here. So regionally, if you look at, we'll start with the green line. If you look at the green line on the top of the page, traffic coming off of I-25 on County Line Road will be directed to the Yosemite Street intersection, and then they'll be directed down to the Sears, the old Sears property back access area, and then over to the west side where the yellow blob is, where the queuing and staging will be for the off-site cars. Oh, yeah, good point, yeah, thank you.
It's not the yellow blob?
No.
That's where the red and the blue lines meet.
There you go, yeah. So once they're queued up, and Aaron Anderson with In-N-Out will get in more depth on this as well, but...
And we should note for council and the record, Aaron Anderson is on the phone. Or he is virtually available to us with In-N-Out.
That is correct, yeah.
So thank you for acknowledging that, Jake.
Yes. So they will follow the blue path to In-N-Out to get into the drive-thru. So they will go out to the signalized intersection at Yosemite. They'll go north on Yosemite to the signalized intersection at Chester, and then to the signalized intersection at Westview, make a right turn into In-N-Out. And that's by design, because we want traffic to make the right turn in, and then as they exit, we want them to make the right turn out, just to provide a more efficient traffic flow for them. So again, they get their burger, and then they follow the red line out, either north to County Line or south along Parkland down to Yosemite. And then from Yosemite, they could go further south to 470, or they could go back up to County Line if they want to go westbound on County Line.
Jacob, could you speak to how cars, or maybe you're doing this later, how the cars are going to be released from the staging area?
Yes.
Are you planning on doing that later?
Aaron will be talking about how they take the orders and release them to the...
Okay, so we understand there's not going to be a line of traffic. There's not going to be a blue line that just continues to exist through there.
Yes, that's an excellent point, and a good segue to the next slide, because I can show you, so this is the local access plan. So this, these blue lines are free-flowing traffic. There's going to be no queuing or no stopping or standing of cars related to In-N-Out or other businesses, for that matter. So this plan is intended to keep all these blue areas into the Park Meadows Mall, into the surrounding businesses and restaurants, free-flowing for anybody that needs to go in any of these directions, while we're also getting people from Sears to In-N-Out. So if you overlay on the next slide, you'll see both plans kind of overlaid together. And Mayor, that's a great point. The dark blue line is meant to be just driving from one location to another location, no stopping, standing, queuing, or anything like that. It is just getting from the staging area to In-N-Out itself.
And they'll be able to enter the parking lot of In-N-Out?
Correct.
Right, so they'll be released, when there's capacity in the parking lot, they'll signal over to the staging area, release the next set of vehicles, and they'll have to stop at the stoplights and obey traffic. But other than that, they won't be backing up onto the roadway.
Exactly, and what you'll see in more in-depth with what Aaron's going to present to you is how they get there and what measures are in place along the way. is how they get there and what measures are in place along the way to make sure they get to where they're going and don't get confused, as well as leave the site as well. So we kind of wanted to give you the bigger picture on the whole thing. And then Mr. Aaron Anderson, who is on, I believe, hopefully he's unmuted.
Yeah, I'm here. Can you guys hear me?
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Aaron. He's going to go in a little bit more depth and we'll answer any questions you have after his presentation.
Thanks, Jacob. And Aaron, welcome, and we love your first slide. It's very fun to see the Lone Tree name underneath your logo.
Kudos to Jacob for getting the font downloaded in his PowerPoint. That is, that's a specific In-N-Out font proprietary, so thanks. Doesn't show up if you don't have it downloaded, so I appreciate it. But thank you for taking the time to allow us to present. I didn't know I'd be getting a lesson on body cams and tasers, which was a super.
It's dinner and a show in Lone Tree, dinner and a show.
That was amazing, so I don't know if I'll follow that. I don't know if this is as interesting, but I'll try my best. So the first slide here, I think I may have presented something, maybe this exact plan or something very similar to it at the city council hearing that we had last year, I believe. But this is the scenario, so this is obviously our property. And you could cycle through all those if you want. So essentially, this is, let's say, nothing spills out onto the public roads. This is kind of a plan that we would implement to, you know, contain as many cars as we can on our property. So you could see, we could hold if we reconfigured the parking stalls, 52 cars on site. We do lose some parking. We would probably park our associates there because they're not going anywhere. They're going to be working all day. We'd keep those handicapped stalls open. And the yellow smiley faces indicate our associates. And then that orange smiley face is a manager, and we would cone off that connection. The normal drive-through layout, obviously, you could follow that loop around the bend, and that would be sort of the normal queue. But this is a potential scenario, so, you know, we don't quite know how busy it's going to be. But if we did need to contain everything on our site, that's as good as it gets for us. And you can cycle through to that next slide. Take one more click, yeah, we'd have A-frame signage. This slide is, you know, a little more technical. So we have reached out to a local traffic control company, Colorado Barricade. They do all kinds of work in Denver and the Denver metro area. And this is their plan for how we're going to implement the scenario that Jacob showed you guys in the previous slides. So we're going to have a ton of signage. We're going to have digital message boards, and we're going to have a ton of personnel. If you click through, whoever's controlling the clicks, a couple more times. So those green circles indicate the uniformed traffic officers. And if you keep clicking one more time. So then the purple are our flaggers. So obviously, the uniformed officers are there to keep traffic flowing and to keep, you know, try to prevent people from turning down Westview, blocking any intersections, just really keep the flow of traffic. The flaggers are there to keep the driveways from being blocked and do our best to prevent In-N-Out customers from pulling into neighboring properties and parking, which is something that we're trying to prevent. And there's a ton of signage, those little black bars with the two circles. Those are all no parking, no In-N-Out parking signs that we'll put in front of everybody's driveway. And hopefully that will deter would-be customers from trying to park on other people's property. If you go to the next slide, this is the continuation of the overall picture. So that is Yosemite, Chester, and Parkland, where all that text is summary of devices. That is where the Sears property lies. Click and click three more times, I think, one, two, three. So all those green circles again represent uniformed traffic officers. And the instructions will be given to the cars that queue up at Sears to sort of follow their lead, and they're there to guide the customers headed to the queue in the right direction and try to prevent anybody from making a wrong turn. And if you go to that next slide, so this is the layout of the Sears property. We've been working with ABG, who is the owner and property manager of this property. And this is the area that we're going to dedicate. It's preliminary, but it should represent kind of what we end up with. That's the lease area, and that'll be how we stack our drive-through queue off-site. It's a pretty large area. It may not seem like that in this picture, but there's a ton of parking spaces and a lot of physical area that we'll have access to. And go to that next slide. So this is kind of redundant. This is pretty much what we just saw in the staff slides. But if you click one more time, so this is sort of a step-by-step. So following anyone going down County Line, they're going to see a video message board. It's going to tell them if they want to enter the queue to keep going straight. They'll follow that magenta path. And there are two access points. I highlighted only one, but there is another entrance, driveway entrance there at the back of the property. I'm not sure which one works better, but I guess either work. And then you can click one more time for me. So here is where the magic happens. So what we want to do is when customers queue, there'll be sort of either a parallel configuration or some kind of snake queue. That's sort of just a representation of what we would do on-site, but off-site. And as we group cars, so let's say we can do 10 at a time, we would take their order. That way, when they show up on the other side, we already know what they want. We would have people, sort of like how In-N-Out and other high-volume QSRs do when you're in the drive-through, you have order takers that walk the lane and don't, you don't get to the menu board per se. Somebody's taking your order from a distance. And we would hand them a ticket or place a ticket on their windshield. And that would be the identifier that they are actually allowed to enter the queue. And if you click one more time for me. And then, of course, the exit path would be at that intersection following the blue line. They would go from, you know, up Yosemite, right on Chester, left on Parkland. And click again. One more time. One more time for me. So we would have a temporary storage. So there's a center lane along Westview, and we would sort of queue up our 10 cars at a time there and then flag them in that group into the drive-through queue. And then that red line represents what we saw in the previous overall overview slide, which is the exit path that our customers would take. We'd make that driveway a right-out only. So cars could either go right on Parkland or left and exit the site. Click one more time. And next slide. So operational strategy, like I talked about, we're going to queue the cars at the Sears. And we will be taking the orders off-site. Then we'll provide each car that's headed to the queue and following the path of the uniformed officers, some unique identifier. We're not really sure what the best solution is to that at this point. We're still working through the logistics, whether it be something that magnetically attaches to the roof of the car, like what you get when you go to the car dealership and you drop your vehicle off at the service station. They stick that sort of magnetic identifier. We don't know if that's, you know, we don't want to damage anybody's car. It could be as simple as a sticker on the windshield with the order on it. But there would be something that is unique to the people waiting in the queue that the associates on the other side will recognize. So if you don't have that unique identifier, then you're not allowed to enter the queue, just in case somebody tries to skirt the rules and cut it line. And then that last column there on the right are some sort of important facts that I think I should highlight is, first one, this is not going to be the first store in Colorado. We have two locations opening. One of them will be in Colorado Springs and the other will be in City of Aurora. And right now, it seems like they'll be open for about 20 days prior to the Lone Tree location. So what we're hoping is that, you know, we still want to do good business. But we think the immediate hype of In-N-Out coming to Colorado will have died down, will have died down by the time Lone Tree opens. What it'll also do, and I want to make a point to the council and the staff and to the public, if anybody's watching, is Aurora or Colorado Springs, for that matter, will offer you guys some insight into how we manage traffic. So I would invite you guys to drive up to Aurora if you have the time. We have, you know, a similar, that crowd will be larger than what we're going to deal with here, but we have a plan. And it'll really give you an idea of how professional we are at dealing with traffic. And, you know, you could sit in the queue if you'd like or you could just watch from a distance. But I would urge everybody to see how we perform on a high-profile opening. The second thing in that list is the resource commitment. So I want to highlight, you know, that traffic plan is not a small endeavor. I mean, I would argue that, you know, not a lot of quick-serve restaurants would go to the extent that we're doing. It's not cheap. It certainly, there's a lot there. And I hope that what that does is establishes sort of the good faith effort that we're making, shows the city and the neighbors how committed we are to doing whatever it takes to make sure that this is manageable, that everybody's business stays operable. And, you know, and also understand that sometimes these situations are fluid. You know, if there's something we can do better when we open or something that we need to adjust, that we've committed resources to do that. If there's something that you guys see we could improve, we're committed to doing that on the fly. And we're also committed to staying the course. So if this lasts three days, one day, 15 or 20, you can rest assured that we're not going to bail after, you know, a week. We're going to stick around as long as we need to and as long as the situation persists. If there is a lot of traffic, we're going to stay the course. And then that last bullet there is, like I mentioned, you know, we have a track record. We've been doing this for 72 years. We've had some really busy openings in the recent past, and we've done very well at managing them. And like I said, I'd urge everybody to see for yourself, you know, check out the Aurora opening and watch us in action. And hopefully that will build confidence. And, yeah, and we're looking forward to becoming a member of this community. It's been two years in the making for me, and I'm just really excited to finally be really close to the finish line. So and I'll answer any questions that you guys may have, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the commitment and we absolutely understand the track record. Let me look to council to see, and council member Carpenter, do you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, thanks, and I applaud you for the commitment to the traffic plan. It's very comprehensive. Question around in the new, in the current COVID environment that we're in, will there be any in-restaurant dining or is it strictly drive-through only?
That is a fantastic question. That's sort of a fluid situation. As it is, as it stands today, I believe operationally, we will be handling customers to come into the dining room, but for takeout only. And I know this changes from market to market and week to week, but, you know, really from an operational standpoint, I believe our stance is sort of uniform across the board. So, you know, while Colorado and the Lone Tree market may allow dine-in, from an operational standpoint, it's hard for us to do one-off. You know, there's a lot of regulations, if that makes sense. So we try to just follow one uniform plan. And I think at this time, it's going to be walk-in, order, and takeout only.
And follow-up. And then a follow-up, so again, to that point, is there a kind of a foot traffic plan in place in terms of, because I envision just me as a consumer thinking, okay, to go stage at Sears and that process is kind of lengthy, why don't I just park at the mall and walk over?
After I shop at the mall.
Right, exactly.
Hopefully.
But is that any concern in terms of lines of foot traffic coming in for takeout?
And you know what, Jay, that was one of my questions. And so what I guess, what I'd love to see, and I'm directing this to staff, is the pedestrian plan as well. When you come back to show us the next plan, I absolutely think, I absolutely agree with you, Jay. There's going to be, we need a pedestrian plan as well. So is that, does that, okay, cover that? Okay, yeah, Kathy?
Again, really appreciate the, I can't even fathom what you're showing me on the screen here of how many cars to anticipate, so I only have two questions. In your experience in these openings, what is the average number of days that you experience this kind of extra-high load?
It's a good question. It varies from region to region. I mean, I think here we're expecting, you know, and when I say here, I mean Colorado in general. You know, I would say the first stores may see a prolonged high volume. But what we do is we look in 15-day chunks, if that is a good answer. So when we do agreements with off-site properties, we do like a 15-day license agreement or 15-day lease, and then with a term to extend it. So we sort of just look at like two weeks, give or take, before things die down as a worst-case scenario. But we have a site in Oregon that lasted, you know, I think it still has, you know, it still spills out off property, but it's the only store in Portland. So there's no, you know, here we have two other stores to sort of act as a safety valve and relieve pressure.
Got it, and that question stems from just messaging for us that if we know that generally it's a less than two-week period, that's a much easier message for both our residents and the people who start to complain when it happens versus this could go on for multi-months. So just as we could continue to understand that. And then my second question, one that has me more concerned, is looking at when the certificate of occupancy would be available. And I know you never say when we're opening, but I have a massive concern that it happens to be right around the time that we have the most aggressive traffic in all of Lone Tree that goes on typically from December 1st until about the second week in January. So is it our expectation that this is going to hit during that timeframe?
Yes, I'll answer that for you, Aaron. That is the, yes, which is why there's so much time and energy being placed on it. And again, I encourage council to reflect on that traffic plan because we are providing feedback tonight for it. But yes, Kathy, I think it's.
Yeah, because the Yosemite corridor during that time is almost never free-flowing. So when we say it's going to be free-flowing out of Sears and onto Yosemite, that during that timeframe, unless you're driving around like at midnight, that's rarely free-flowing. So as long as that's being contemplated, that would not be normal traffic patterns during that time. And then my second question is.
Now, this is your third.
Third, sorry. They also use the Sears parking area for overflow for the mall and for workers.
That has.
Has that also been, again, just worried about the timing of this? That was, we still have access to that set.
That has been addressed.
Awesome.
Yes. Yeah, when, yes?
I was curious if you'd be publishing this plan or make it available on a website so that people will understand they can't just filter in from a side driveway or something?
I mean, if they know what to expect, it may actually help traffic flow.
And it is the expectation of the city to be publishing this plan. So I'm not sure, and I think that is the messaging around this will be the key to it being successful. So that and not to be determined, it hasn't been determined exactly how it's going to be messaged out, but what I know for sure is that the city is actively going to be messaging it.
Okay, excellent.
Yeah.
Has or website, other options like that?
And even local media. I mean, I would, I see a press release talking about this in our future. Councilmember Anderson, anything from you?
Yeah, just a couple of curiosities. And along the lines of where the discussion is going in terms of messaging, public awareness on all this and how we get that all out ahead of time. Sitting here as a councilperson looking at this plan. Sitting here as a councilperson, looking at this plan as an engineer, it's still pretty complicated, hard to understand. So my question had to do a little bit with what's happened before and what you got planned in terms of these public hearings or public meetings. How effective was the first public meeting? How well is it we're going to get the word out to give people a chance to see the plan and ask questions before the other social media approaches and messaging that we plan to do?
We actually did have good participation at the first public meeting. Unfortunately, we had to go virtual, but that might have actually helped with attendees more than an open house style setting. So we did get pretty much representation from all surrounding businesses at at that public meeting. And we are contemplating and hoping that they'll also come out next Tuesday as well. We've also conversed either via phone or email with several of the surrounding property owners as well. So I I believe that we've been able to get good communication and contact with with the interested and concerned parties throughout the process. And so I think that the first meeting was well-represented and hopefully next Tuesday will be as well.
And just for council's knowledge, the city manager and I did have a virtual call with Park Meadows Retail Resort to discuss this as well. And Public Works has had numerous contacts with Park Meadows Retail Resort because to the mayor pro tem's point, this is happening at our busiest time of the year. So and I think to be direct that there is very real concern from the local businesses in and around, in and out, as excited as we all are to welcome in and out, that that we not interrupt their ability to be successful. And that staff has certainly prioritized that in there as they've looked at the at the traffic plan. And so I've had the benefit of seeing it a little ahead of time and asking questions. And I, that's why I say I would encourage, now that you've had this overview, I would encourage my council members to go back to those packets, your your study session. And this is a bit will be available and look at the traffic flow. And and because I think the more eyes on it, the better. And I think we have an obligation to serve our existing businesses just as just as enthusiastically as we are willing to to serve our new businesses, right? So do you have anything, another?
The other one is more of a technology issue. Curious of whether you have modeled what you think is going to happen? Do you have an expectation of the numbers of vehicles? How long the wait's going to be within the first hour, first day, first week? What's your expectation?
Yeah, Aaron, I might ask you if the queuing length that you have, have you guys determined what what a a car at the end of that queue average wait time might be?
Which queue? The one at the Sears property? The one that's depicted in the diagram that I have that I provided tonight?
Yes.
You know, no, I didn't calculate it. I mean, we could, you know, it's it's about 60 seconds per car after the first eight cars. So I mean, we could run a number and let you know. I mean, there's really no crystal ball. If I if I could create a model, I mean, there's so many variables here. I don't think it's it's useful. But, you know, if we had a crystal ball, it would make all of our lives a whole lot easier. We just don't really know until we get out there. I mean, really, the evidence will be, you know, seeing how the traffic patterns, you know, turn out after the Thanksgiving holiday. We'll have time to observe, really see what the traffic is this year versus last year. And we'll also have you guys will have a chance to observe what what the crowd looks like in Aurora. You know, I think what we can see in Aurora will be a much more muted version of that opening will will take place in Lone Tree. So we'll have time in between that opening, plenty of time, to make adjustments and and perhaps model based on what we see in real in real time in this market. I mean, these are all new stores, so and every market is different.
And Aaron, I assume you're using the same traffic management company as the flaggers at the Aurora location as you would be at the Lone Tree location. Is that true?
No, not at the moment. It's all on private property, so we can perform our own traffic control. We may need to reach out, but at this point in time, our we have our own in-house traffic. We have our own experts. And when we're on private property, I mean, they've been doing this. We they've opened hundreds of these. So they're just as equipped. When we get into the public right-of-way, it becomes liability. And, you know, so we do reach out to an outside company. But Aurora will be mainly in and out folks.
Oh, okay. Okay. Anything else from, I have a couple of things, but I want to get make sure council has everything. So the only things I would add are, and I don't, we don't need to answer this tonight, but just confirming that we've got the officers available to to meet the demand that I just saw on that sheet and then also the other demands that we have from our existing businesses. And that's a Lone Tree question, Aaron, not a you question. But and then the other issue was obviously the pedestrian plan that Jay brought up. And also, as I reviewed that plan, and I know Aaron suggested that, you know, you potentially entering the queue at the Sears property from the signalized intersection. And I actually think it makes a lot more sense to have them entering in that right turn before you get to the signalized intersection and leaving that signalized intersection free for traffic into the the retail resort. And that would be my preference and only use that signalized intersection to be releasing cars from the queue. And I think it's actually easier for the queuing for in and out because that's a quick right turn in. Why leave them on that major roadway for a longer period of time? Not going to be answered tonight, but that's my feedback for right now. Okay. So Aaron, we are so excited and cannot wait. And thank you for the time you spent with us this evening. And we look forward to seeing the next round of the plan. So thanks.
Likewise, thank you all. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Mayor, if I may, I can't answer the officer question. We have been coordinating with Sergeant Callahan. And the determination is in and out will be using private, so not not Lone Tree officers.
Got it. So I think we need to clarify that on the presentation with Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, we we're running behind, but running behind with some good things. So let's move on to the, this is really just to give counsel a taste of a vacant property registration program that staff is contemplating. Julius is going to be presenting virtually on this. I think it's really got a lot of great ideas and I think we can provide some feedback tonight and give it some direction.
We could also.
All right. You know what, it is, we've got about a half an hour and we do have one more thing on consent. Julius, we thank you so much for being ready virtually. I hope you learned a lot about tasers and in and out traffic. And we look forward to hearing this next time. We've teased it now with council. So I do want to give council an opportunity. We have a, when we have unique items on our consent agenda, we just want to make sure there's an understanding from council. And so this is Resolution 20-26, a resolution amending the Douglas County Impact Unit, Impact Memorandum of Understanding with the sheriff's office. And the chief is just going to give us a high level on really some very minimal changes associated with this.
Well, good evening, mayors and council.
Good evening.
So this is a pretty minor changes to the MOU we have with the sheriff's office. Go to the next slide. So the Impact Unit is a pattern crime investigation unit, as you guys are hopefully aware of. And it includes investigation narcotics trafficking as well. There's currently all four Douglas County law enforcement agencies that are involved. We have one detective, Detective Boos, assigned to that unit. And then Douglas County sent over revising, mainly with minor changes over some verbiage, some titles and some grammar. And but go to the next slide. But there are a couple of things I want to just point out. It clarified, it clarified the asset forfeiture procedures for utilizing reporting on funds, which essentially just, there was a law passed about how we have to do that. They just changed the MOU to reflect that. And they have already been following those rules, just so you are aware, for the last couple of years. Outline procedures for conducting health evaluations of all Impact Unit members. And that's due to the fact that they do take down clandestine meth labs, also marijuana grows. And there are toxic chemicals at times involved. They do wear protective gear and PPE. Nonetheless, though, they've had some folks in the past that have had developed, and they've been in the unit too long or worked on those types of things, developed some ailments that they believe are related. So they're going to do a baseline assessment of everybody that goes in the unit and then baseline when they leave to make sure there was no, nothing significant. And then screenings will be done, like I said, entering the unit annually and then upon exit. Next slide. And then there's no additional cost to the city. We did contribute, we have been contributing and our contribution this year was $1,560 is based on our overall department size. Next slide. And then there's a, like the background is we had a long, we have a longstanding relationship with Douglas County. We've been participating in Impact, although I think back in 2006, it was called something different, like a major crime or I'm not really sure. It's some other name, but basically it's the same unit. And then we have been utilizing Impact due to car break-ins, some narcotics complaints we've had and some other recurring crime patterns within the city. And I would note that the Impact team also, just to highlight a couple of things, they do, they're like a, you know, they do just about everything. So they've responded to active shooters, they responded to STEM assistance. They came out and helped us when we had our shooting. They help homicide at times if the homicide unit has a difficult case. So they they do a really wide variety of things. And they help execute warrants in other cities and and within the county. So it's definitely a great resource for us to be able to call upon for the city. Next slide. So the recommended action is place this on the October, today's consent agenda for approval. And just recommend it be approved for Resolution 2026 over the consent agenda. And last slide, any questions?
Thanks, chief. So is everyone comfortable with any questions for the chief? Any clarifications on this? Okay, we will see it on consent. All right, thanks, chief. All right, with that, that concludes. And we've, we've gone over our study session allotted time this evening. So we will just take our break now until we convene for our regular meeting at 7:00. Thanks.